At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we come to a very important part of our program this evening. The part where we can hear from you, the residents of the Rosso South, and respond as best as is possible to the concerns that you have raised. So we're gonna do it in a very organized way, where we'll have groups of five to go to the mic, which is placed there, to make your intervention, and then we'll try to respond as best as possible. Our head table will try to respond. So please buy a show of hands, those of us who would want to make an intervention. We have Mr. LaFon. We have Ms. Roy. We have Lady at the back here. Well, Mr. LaFon, you have to wait. I just call in the first five. Our residents from Newtown will take priority. So we also have Ms. Natasha Ilojabat. Anybody else? And Mr. Bedminster. So we have a... And Mr. Lioga. So we have the first five. So Mr., just allow them the courtesy. I'll call up. So let's hear from Dessau.
Dessau.
Yes, sir.
Good night, Prime Minister, to all the ministers, and to all my community members. I have to say thanks to the government for the job that they have done for us. I sat there tonight, and even before I... On my way down, that labour right getting blows on how she turn. A man said by the shop, "Where they going? What the F CBI doing for them?" Me myself, I'm K R D. I cannot say the answer. But without CBI, where would we have been? And my answer to them on the mic is, CBI goes, something else will go... Will come to us. And thanks for the foresight, the vision, and the knowledge that the Prime Minister has that he is able to distribute that amongst all of us in Dominica. I'm going to the next topic. When the Prime Minister spoke about tourism, I was really wondering whether we were going to speak about tourism tonight. Because I have my boy, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. He is in diving since at the age of twelve. He has two boat captains' licenses. He has done his training in first aid. And within a year, my son has rescued people within the constituency, directly or indirectly. His name is Magdval Joseph Clements. He saved a young child, directly, one indirectly, and in a major accident we had up Fortney. When the truck hit that transport from behind, we cannot understand how the young man came out from that vehicle. But the first person he called for was my son. And if my son did not run from all the way across the Prime Minister's office right now to reach up there, this young man would have died. Because that is O U. His head was facing down. He had a major cut in his leg. And he performed first aid on that young man. What I'm trying to say, we have a lot of young guys on the road in Newtown that have their skills. Probably we need to bring them further or head them to go further from where they are. For example, my child, he has two boat captains' licenses. You understand? We... The tourism industry and the Prime Minister spoke about Egley Sun and the flower arrangement business. Mr. George would know that. He's my cousin. My grandmother grew a lot of carrots, cabbages, and my sisters and I and my cousins, his brothers and them, we just used to wipe the carrots off our legs. And those carrots were very sweet. So we do not only have to go into flower. We can also go into our vegetables and our green seasonings. And just advising. How do you know that?
Okay, we have to keep the interventions at a reasonable length so others can ask their questions.
I hope they have good questions for my Prime Minister. And as he knows, I'm probably the only homeless vibrant sport person here. And I have to say thanks to the Prime Minister for our sport complex. However, as a netballer, we need something down lower where we can train before we can go up to the complex. Thank you.
All right. Let's put our hands together for Dessau. I always say if it's one mother that loves her son, it's Dessau. Dessau loves her son. Let's hear from Ms. Natasha Ilojabat.
Okay, good evening to our representatives. And thank you, Mr. Benoit, for allowing me the opportunity to ask these questions. So I have two questions. One related to the indoor sports facility. I was happy to hear that you have an Olympic-sized swimming pool. And I think it ties in very timely with the focus on vocational training. And I note that we are investing millions into academic education. But I think the people in Newtown know from experience that there are quite a few sort of hindrances for those who may not be very academic. They may not be able to take advantage of the scholarship opportunities because of poverty, because of access to proper housing, socialization. So I think one of the things that I would like to see materialize, and I would really like to hear from the Prime Minister and those who are here with him, how is this sports facility going to allow for access to those who used to be incorporated? Whether it's through leisure, whether it's through vocational training, probably to have qualified lifeguards, maybe even customer service training, so that not only will this sports facility be available to play sports, but it will be there as a house, you know, for those persons who need that outlet, whether it's vocational or through leisure, maybe boxing for the guys who are on the block. When I packed my vehicle, they were having a really excited discussion. Maybe if they had the indoor sports facility available where they can come and do sparring, boxing, develop themselves professionally, how would that vocation sign in the sports facility? And second, in terms of access for education, I noted that that 2020 vision to have the graduates and the need for that entrepreneurial spirit. Many of the persons in the Caribbean and Latin America is within that age category of eighteen to twenty-four. So it means that we need to start the interventions earlier before it's too late. So at primary school, and I would really like to hear what type of support are there for charities that have that focus of entrepreneurial education? I know Mr. Sejar and I know the Minister of Youth have already made commitments. But I would like to see some sort of tangible financial commitments going to those programs to allow for entrepreneurship education to be implemented so that we can have that culture of entrepreneurship from primary school and kindergarten even. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's hear from Mr. Bedminster. Then we have Mr. LaFon.
I'd like to say good evening to the PM and his cabinet. And good evening to the residents of Newtown, Rosso South. My contribution is more a thank you note. Okay, but however, during your speech, PM, I heard you mention about special ed. I don't know if it was the spirits, the Holy Spirit, but it related directly to me because I have an autistic son. Okay? And it's very challenging. Now, my wife, she went to high school. She went to college. She's well-educated. My son will be getting ten years this year. And she could not have done that one day work. That means I have to be working alone all the time. I'm not complaining. I'm a man, and I have to work to support my family. However, as we know, it would have been better if they were not a salary coming in. Okay? And it's... I mean, it touches me. And I would like to ask if you or the government will be making provision for families with children like this? You know, an intervention, we try to incorporate them into a school, but it's very expensive. We just can't meet the tuition. It's too much. So it's off... You know the list. And if we could get him into a facility, that means my wife could work. Instead of asking for assistance from the government, she could work. So we could build our family, you know, financially. You know? And you know, I saw I'm just asking for this thing. Please, if you put something in place, it should be good. Not for me, but for all of us who have children, you know, in that condition. You know, and I want to say thank you for all what you have done, you and the government on a whole. Because sometimes I get off myself. I'm a labour right. Everyone knows that. But I get off myself and just think. You know, trying to take in the bias. So not try to be biased and say, "What do they have to offer?" I mean, your position. And it always come back to me, nothing. You know, so I am really better off being a labour right and supporting the Labour Party right off the box. No apologies to that. You know? Come on. And when I was younger, there was a program called Touch by an Angel. The people who are my age or a little older will know that. And when I look at the program, you know, for the elderly, I think of that program. You know, and I mean, guys who oppose that, I think they haven't got a heart. You know, or if they have a heart, they are just politically biased. You know? So I want to tell you thanks for everything you are doing for people. Because I've seen families, poor families, receive housing. Never before have I seen that. You know? So I cannot vote against that. Now, I am in my fifties now. I'm living there, that... And I'm in the middle-aged section. Had my family... My mother and my father been alive, they would have been up there in the eighties and the seventies. That means they would have been getting their assistance. That's helpful for my pocket. I have children under eighteen. That's helpful from my pocket. You know, so I mean, people, we have to get real. We made a mistake. I call it a mistake to vote the other party in this constituency. Next time, let it not be happening, okay? So that's my contribution, and thank you very much.
Very much, Garfield. Let's hear from Mr. LaFon. And then after... After Mr. LaFon, we'll hear responses from our head table. Oh, and Mr. Lioga, sorry.
Good evening to the head table. As Mr. Benoit said, this is here for LaFon. A lot of people might be hearing your voice on the radio, but they don't know the individual. First thing I'm going to touch on is housing. Mr. Austria, I think he's doing one of the biggest jobs right now in Dominica. Because it's a big concern of the housing situation in Dominica. And what I would like to bring forward, I know there's a lot of people who have lots and they cannot build. And some people will come out and ask for assistance. Some people would ask for a lot because they want to move from where they are to bring up their family. What I'm trying to say is, if the government, the lots some of the people have, we know the salaries, probably they cannot meet the bank or the credit union that they can get a loan. So if the housing minister or the government could think of putting up apartments, in other words, like what happened in Bafas State or Emsol, and what we are going to see in Pung, just now where I was born, I think it would be a great thing for the people of Dominica. It's like Grodlop. Probably if some of us travel, Canada, England, all where you see them, there's a lot of Dominicans who live away and in the apartments they are living. So if we can go more into the apartments, I think it would be better for our people. Secondly, I'm just going to touch on something else. My next...
Let's listen to Mr. LaFon.
My next touch is roads. I think we have a very hard-working Minister of Communication and Works. How? Works. Because first time in my life, I have seen work so in Dominica for roads, walls. I mean, just name it. And after the housing minister, I will say plain, the hardest-working minister in the government is the Minister of Public Works, Mrs. Blanchard. We can't... Nobody can decide that's not true. And another thing I observe, Mr. Prime Minister, the Minister of Security. When I listen to any... In fact, what I should have said is, the Minister of Security, I listen to when they are having his town hall meetings and when he's going to open certain areas on his roads. Why he cannot invite the Minister of Public Works? He would like... He wants to do everything for himself. And the way I watch it, if you are building walls, if you are building roads, the person that's supposed to be there is the Minister of Communication and Works. The Minister of Roads should be opening it. He wants to take everything. I mean, all of us know that. We are smiling, but that is... That is my concern. I just like, and I think that as Minister of Security, he must work more on his portfolio than working more on the Minister of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaFon. Thank you very much. Yeah. Just to... Just to deliver the... Just to deliver the last point made by Mr. LaFon. I think there's a misunderstanding. Normally, when it is a constituency-level project, that is usually led by the PAL rep. Okay, so that's why you would see Mr. Blackmore always opening his roads and doing his stuff by himself and so on. But I will say to my friend... My friend raised some very important points, you know? So we've taken note of the points. I think, you know, somebody like your son with this qualification would play a very important role in the training program. You know? To provide training to a number of young men and women who like to take the sea as the area of earning a living. So we'll certainly recall on him with the high qualification which he has and in respect to his captain licenses and so forth. And in respect to tourism, I mean, I just highlighted a couple of them. And likewise, I just made reference to the flowers. But it will be looking at a wide gamut of areas within the tourism and hospitality sector. The indoor sports facility, Natasha, and how do we link it to vocational training? And you made some valid points. I mean, you are an expert on that. You know, so you made some very valid points in respect to the kind of skill set would require for the indoor facility. So that point is well taken. Clearly, we're gonna have to refocus the state college to some extent. My respectful view and it's not a criticism of the state college, that's how the environment is, that there is a heavy focus on academic pursuits. And therefore, we need to get the college to be more balanced in its delivery of tuition and skills and knowledge to our population. And so the college would be responsible in large measure for the provision of tuition in respect to the training and the various areas of training in the country. And they will also be providing certification. But we'll also be engaging highly skilled and qualified people in those areas. So they are at a high level in terms of their proficiency and knowledge of the areas of concern. We're not just taking anybody to train people. We have to ensure that people know what they're about. And when our Dominicans train, they can provide services here or anywhere in the world that it is required and so forth. In respect to supporting private institutions who are doing entrepreneurship training, it's a point we note. And I'm sure we will be looking at that suggestion in a positive light and so forth. The... Because part of the component, only components of the entrepreneurship program is to provide training to some of the entrepreneurs and so forth. Because, I mean, as you know, business is an evolving system. I mean, you know, what happened ten years ago, five years ago, may no longer be relevant. Now, there are new systems, new accounting systems, new management styles that one has to acquaint itself with. I want to say to my friend, you know, that the issue of the training of teachers in the special education, it is something very critical. And I have been encountering more and more students who are suffering from autism in Dominica. And I see how it has had an impact on families. And you're right. I have seen families where either both members or one member or one parent cannot go to work. You must stay home because the school systems are not properly... Are not catering properly staffed and equipped. Even if the principal and teacher have the best interest and want trying to help, but they are just unable to help. And therefore, we first have to provide the training. But it's not only training, but looking at the families who have children with special needs. And to look at the welfare of these families. And to ensure that these families are in a position where they can provide for their children. And ensure that the children can have a better life. Because in my reading on autism and so forth, if the children are imparted with the proper tuition and the guidance, they can become productive citizens. You know? Because they have the ability to learn specially, to be able to learn and to draw and to sing and to... And all these wonderful things. You know? But we have to ensure that at the formative years, we can capture the semblance of autism and be in a position to provide specialized training and education to those children. But we have to be sufficiently qualified. And that cannot be a little workshop here, a little workshop on the summer. It must be trained properly. And when the teachers are trained, that the state, the government, provides the tools, the equipment, the resources. So you don't only have an empty classroom with a trained person, but ensuring that we have the tools so that there will be special classes. You know, I taught a school in Texas for a term. And I had to teach one of the special education classes. And I mean, we used to have, for example, in the classroom, different colour bulbs. So we have a yellow bulb, a red. And we'll allow children to bring in their couch and their bed from home. And because children like this learn with the environment that they feel comfortable with. And if you do not have the training, the practical training to impart that you can cause irreparable damage and harm to the children. So sometimes we're trying something, but if something is not what it really should be. And I think we have come at a time in the country where we have to provide for our special children in Dominica. And we must find the resources, must train our people, must provide it. And the training is not going to limit it to the teachers. People like yourselves will come to a classroom to understand how to deliver the child home. You understand? So it's gonna be a holistic program to ensure that every one of us who comes into contact with our children who are suffering autism can play a role, can make a contribution to the child's welfare and well-being. Because for families who have children with autism, one of the major preoccupations of these families is leaving this child behind. You understand? And I believe we have to be our brother's keeper and to see what we can do to minimize that anxiety and that worry. And for me, the fifteen million dollars for the manufacturers and the roads and so forth, to me, going to the budget, one of the things I feel very, very emotional about and concerned about is that training for special education children. You know, we have to provide that for children. One of the projects One of the projects you will see us speaking about, Mr. LaFon, you know, in budget, is a middle-income housing development. We have dealt with the low-income people. We've dealt with the low-income people. We are seeking now to target the middle-income people. Because as I made the point earlier, the number of young people who are now in the middle class, who are going to study, who are back, who are paying their student loans, who would like to build a home, but do not yet have the resources to consolidate to do that. And that's to give you an idea as to what this housing thing is going to be. And more than likely, we will use the Dominican Social Security to finance that housing development. So it's an investment for them. And they will make their returns on the investment. And we're targeting in the first instance, lands owned by the Social Security in Warner. This big flat in Warner. The Social Security has about two hundred, three hundred acres of land up there. And what we intend to do is to partner with the DSS, where we may decide as a government to put in the infrastructure. So we'll put in the roads, we'll pay for water connection there, we'll pay for lights and so forth. So if the value of the house, including infrastructure, everything, is three hundred thousand dollars, the government will say, well, let us remove the government's share in that of fifty thousand dollars. And therefore, we'll sell the house to the middle-income person at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So in a sense, the government will be subsidizing the house. But the person will be able to go to the bank. And the banks are already running to us to say, we'll provide mortgages for those houses and so forth. So that there'll be pre-approved mortgage system and program at the banks, where you go there and you say, I want to buy a house, my house is twenty-three thousand dollars. And that's another thing, house and land, you understand? And then you'll get the mortgage from the commercial bank. And the government will subsidize, say, forty or fifty thousand dollars. So instead of buying the house for three hundred thousand dollars, you would buy the house for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And thereby, you're able to own your own home and stop the paying of rent. So you have your own investment and so on. So this is the kind of things we're looking at in the budget to respond to the concerns and challenges confronting families. And with the little resources that we have, in a practical way, doing those things and so forth. So you're right on target in respect to the number of people who like to build, who may have the land, but they're still paying the banks for the loan. And they have to wait till they finish paying the loan for the land to build. And by that time, you know, ten, fifteen years gone and so forth. So we're trying to fast-track, so to speak, people's ownership of homes in Dominica. So this housing project will target middle-income people. And the reason why we're going, we're allowing the banks to finance it, is that we do not want to compete with the banks. You understand? We don't go to compete with the banks. Because if government goes and competes with the banks, there'll be less business for the banks. Less business for the banks means less staff for the banks. They will send people home and it can have a negative double no effect and so forth. So we're getting the commercial banks involved, those who would like to get involved, the credit unions who want to get involved, to be able to provide mortgages to purchase those homes in Dominica. And we expect those homes to commence construction in the upcoming financial year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, PM, for responding to our first round of questions. Next, we have Mr. Leo Gal, followed by a lady right here, then Mr. Kemi John, Keria John Baptist, and Mrs. Thomas. So that will be our final round, PM? That will be the final round of interventions. Miss? Okay, well, yes, you were in the previous group, so you can go after Mr. Leo Gal. Yes, Mr. Leo Gal?
Okay, let me say a good evening to the Prime Minister, Mrs. Kerit, my good friend, ex-schoolmate, Minister of Education, Peter Saja, Mr. Douglas, a very good friend of mine also, Honorable Douglas, Mr. Daru from San Joseph, not Daru from Pili Savan. But Mr. Daru, a good night also. The Prime Minister bid me to it. But nevertheless, I'm still going to just say a few words. Sometime in January, the Harlem Sports Club took an opportunity that was given to it by the Free Kick Foundation of San Lucia, where we sent some seven footballers, two female, five male, to San Lucia to a football showcase in front of coaches and scores from universities of America, in America. And five of them awarded scholarship. Okay, but they are not full scholarship, they're partial scholarship. One is still in the making, so hopefully it will be six. There's still one that we are still waiting on to get confirmation. And we have already done everything that we can, okay, to make sure that the students are on their way. But there's still some financial hiccups that we are facing. And that is the reason why I had to write to the Prime Minister. I didn't get any response from him, so that's why I was here tonight, to make him know, okay, that I sent a request in. But he mentioned that he got it and we'll be meeting him soon. I just want to mention too that some of the kids are to be out by the ending of this month. They have the thirty-first of July to leave state because they have to be in some mini camp in January. Okay, so it's important that whatever we do, that we get to meet as soon as possible so we can, okay, deal with the matters at hand and see how we can get them out by the end of July. Three of them, four in fact, are from the Rose of Subkontinency. Three from Kingsville, one from Barvestate, one from Point Michel, one from Goodwill. So those are the six students that we have that hopefully will be on their way to college. They're not just going to college for education, it's a football scholarship. And we have been lamenting for years that Dominica doesn't have any professional footballers out there. We are getting a opportunity to send some kids. And the intention is that in the next four or five years, they will become professional footballers. So Dominica will have, and we are confident that we can have at least two or three professional footballers, if not play in America or somewhere, somewhere in the next four or five years. Okay, among that are two female footballers. And they are all national footballers, all national players, at the tender age of under twenty. So that has to be taken into consideration. Okay, so we'll be very grateful, Mr. Prime Minister, that we can get that meeting with you. And we can make arrangements to have them, that matter addressed. On a more localized level, there were mentioned a bit of the rehabilitation of the Center Street Road. But the back street at Kingsville, I think, is worse off than the Center Street Road. Some work was done on the Center Street Road from the top and the bottom. In the middle, okay, was left out. But the back street is very, very bad, especially close to the same gentleman with the asphyxiated. Some person built just at the bottom of the road there. And there was supposed to be a retaining road, but that hasn't been done. And that road is collapsing right in the corner down there. So that can be a very dangerous area. So I think priority, in my humble opinion, should be given to the back street road before the Center Street Road. As the president of Harlem Sports Club, the facility down at Newtown, the very old school, and we are the one who is responsible for the facility. Right at the side of the facility, there is a hard cut. And we've been, but for years to see how we can get that rehabilitated into, well, it doesn't have a full cut, but we can get a half cut. And I think it is important because we have a lot of young men sitting around the area there all day long. If that cut can be rehabilitated, then we can get them onto the cut and they can have activities done during the day instead of sitting around all day long. Okay, and we know, sitting all day long, what is taking place. So if we can cut out some of that, I think that will be very important. So that is my contribution for tonight. But importantly, the students we have going away, that is my main priority. So PM, please help us in that.
All right, let's have our sister there from Newtown area by the savanna. Next, we have you right there.
Good evening, good evening to everyone. My first major concern is that I'm hearing of all the roads that are being fixed. But I live in an area where it seems as if we have been forgotten. Because for years, we have been asking and asking and asking for assistance, for our road, for housing, for children and everything. And we have not been seeing any, anybody whatsoever. The road I'm speaking about is the road leading to Kingsville, leading to Mon Bruce. It's at the foot of the savanna by the cemetery. The PM knows the road very, very well. Some people call it Lower Mon Bruce, some people call it Kingsville, some people say it has no name. So I hope that you all will consider us and at least try and pass and take a look and to see what you all can do for us. On the part of jobs and job applications, I would like to know really what are the criteria or how do you go about applying for a government job? Because it seems as if to me, I'm doing it all wrong. Every time I apply, I always add something to my CV. Because I am forever continuing in doing something, whether it's volunteering or adding something else to update my CV. I recently did two courses at UE where I got an A+ and a B-. And I am adding these things to my CV and for some reason, I'm not seeing myself getting through. For the past four to five years, I have been volunteering with adult education. And earlier this year, I had fourteen prisoners sit CXC. And still, I'm applying to the government for a job and still I am not getting through. So I would like to know if what I am doing is wrong or if there is another way for me to go about doing it. Thank you.
All right, next we have, next young lady there.
Good evening, PM, government ministers, and the audience. My first concern is the basketball court. I heard you talk about sports. But Newtown have a basketball court by the savanna. And we've been begging for that to come into life for so long because we have so many young men in Newtown. And someone is going to play basketball bar food. And we've been seeing ambushed, just asking for that basketball court. And he just understands still, understanding, understanding. So at least we have to try our best to get our young men, at least to take part in sports, at least basketball. You talk about football, but not only football, Newtown has other basketballers. So at least try to fix up that basketball court so we get our young men up the streets. My second concern is the Newtown sidewalk. I think the sidewalk needs a little bit of developing. Because they start one side and up now the other side is still the same thing. And the bypass in Newtown, I'm not sure if they want to bring that back to enhance the community. Because Mr. Scare talked about, he spoke about the yachts on the sea, right? So if you have that bypass, other things can happen by the bedside. And I think that's a good thing at first so we can always bring it back so that we can enhance our community. One more thing, Mr. Scare, no offense, no harm. You talk about the par rap, our par rap is Joshua Francis, right? Jai Isaiah is not our par rap, as you said. But anything, I want to know what is a par rap? Because Joshua Francis won on a worker's seat. But then as he's saying, like, he's not getting the help he needs to help the community.
Okay, okay, let's wrap it up, please, let's wrap it up.
So like, I want to know, like, a par rap, even if they didn't win on a Labour Party ticket, the role of a par rap is to help the constituency, right? So if you're not getting the help that they need, how do they do to help the constituents? So I want to, I want to know what is the reason for that?
Okay, okay, thank you, sister, thank you, thank you. We have one more PM, Kemi, Kemi. Let's just hear from the brother, let's just hear from, from the brother. That's the last one, that's the last intervention.
Okay, 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 okay. Let me say goodnight to the Honorable Prime Minister and Mr. Scare, Dr. Israel Scare. Hello? Okay, okay, let's just quiet for a little bit, okay? Okay, again, greetings, Dr. Scare, Madame Scare, and also the Ministers of Cabinet. Okay, as regards to the last speaker, I myself am a young man, I write proposals and I submit for projects. Right now, we have a project going on at the Newtown Primary School, that is the Newtown Babwa Academy. There's one of our members right there. Also, we also have Dashaki Regis, he was nominated for one of the awards, the National Youth Awards. Okay, so as regards to a par rap getting assistance, if he put pen to paper or his fingers to a computer, he can get some things done.
Hell, then, brother.
Okay, as regards to some of my concerns, I speak from different hats. One of the first things I'll make mention of is the community of Fortney where I reside. We don't have a community center, neither a hurricane shelter. And that's one of the things that we are in need of. As regards to the land, I haven't identified any land. I don't know if there's any government land in the area. But that's one of the things that we do require. Also, there's also the need for improvements in the roads, which you all have already spoken to. But you all should also take into consideration putting guardrails, especially to the area where there was an accident recently. Because it's very dangerous there. Then, we also saw some work being done in the Raving, that's close to the Newtown Junction, to the Fortney Junction. I don't know fully the scope of what that project was. But I saw that some of the material was used or utilized on the other side of the road. And if you realize, that area was just stiff, like tarish. So the soil there was pretty much firm. And where more work should have been done, we saw that that was ignored because a lot of the material was used in another area. So as regards to projects that are being done, we need to ensure that the scope is met, okay? So there needs to be some form of accountability, especially from the engineers. Next, I will speak as regards to the building, the proposed site for the health center. I know that the Minister for Education and Health are there at the moment. As I just said in the beginning, currently, we operate the Newtown Babwa Academy and Mr. Copel has allowed us to have a room there. So in our whole operations, we envision there being, having, like, say, a three or four-story building whereby we could have an auditorium. And seeing that Newtown is a cultural community because we have the Fundabirds Band that has been representing the community for years upon years. So we see there being the potential to actually go into costume building and also into some form of, say, visual and audio art so we can actually continue to develop the talents of the youth in the community. If you all see the painting on the wall right there, we see Sensei, well, the Babwa is not there as yet, but we see the Sensei, we see football. So these are some things that we want to continue. Even this morning, with Mr. John Rivier, we started to do face mask building, and that is a cultural activity, okay? So I know that is the site that the government has identified for the health center. But seeing that a residential area will be done in the Charlotte Valley, I don't know if lands is available to actually put the health center there or... Okay, okay, then, okay, well, then the people have spoken, the voice of the people control. Okay, the voice of the people rule, okay, so I cut that out.
Okay, brother.
Just the last thing. Also, we are doing RegMEX 2017, that is Regay and Bouyor meets Kadass, Kalipso, and Sokar. And that will be featured in Sizzler, Kalange, out of Jamaica. So far, the government has given us some form of support. So going forward, we expect it to be an annual event for the summer. So we'd just like to get continued support from the government on that.
All right, brother. Yes, hand over to our head table to respond.
I, Jai Isaiah?
That was the last, yeah, that was the last one. Yeah, that was the last intervention. Yes, oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Good night to the head table and Mrs. Scare and all the other members of Cabinet. I want to thank you all for coming in our community. Well, tonight, I want to say thank you, Dr. Daru, for the ICE program. I was one of the beneficiary of the program. I had two surgery, I have two more to make. And there is a lady there with a testimony she could not see. But now she's working on her own. So I want to thank the government of Venezuela and the government of Dominica for allowing us to get this opportunity. Because I don't think Dr. Rickett could never reach that program. The amount of people that are there, especially yesterday, they came to visit, we had to go to the health center to get our last check. So that was good. At least some of us, though, we still have a little difficulty, but some of us are doing better. Now, I am the chairperson of the Kingsville Development Committee. My name is Clement S. Thomas. In 2014, we had some visitors from the CDB mission, the Basic Trust Need, the Basic Nature Fund project. We have a document there that said for the Community Center of Kingsville. We had the people here on the twenty-first of May, 2014. We had consultation with them. And then up to now, we cannot get any answer. And we were supposed to be funded under the BNTF seven. That's the document I have there. So we, as the past par rap, Mr. George could vow for that, we had consultation with the people and they promised that they are going to send. But up to now, we haven't got no reply or anything from them. And the purpose for the Resource Center, in the history of Kingsville, we used to have preschool, bakery, shop, and everything else. And now Kingsville has nothing excepting a youth center that is being occupied with some computers now for the well-being of the young people. And we, with the local government, sometime would advise us to take there as a hurricane shelter. But now we cannot do that because of the computer that is in the place. And furthermore, there have been damage through the waters from the road when heavy rain. The water run to the side of the road and come to the yard. And we are not sure if the place will be safe for people sheltering hurricane. And the purpose for that Resource Center, we had, we would like to have a health unit. We had the nurses, instead of Kingsville people would come down that way. Often, none would have the nurses. Instead of going to the home, we would have more people in the area that they can visit us in our community. Early childhood education. Well, we already have the internet cafe, small business. We say hurricane shelter because there are people in the area that cannot even move at their home. And it's a problem for us, it's a problem for us when we hear the storm is coming. And such people, they cannot even get up on their beds. So we would like you, you as Prime Minister of Dominica, to consider us. And there is one more important project. Give me a break, please. There is an important project that we call it the Raving Project. We had consultation, we wrote a program to the Canadian Caribbean Disaster Risk Management. And the people came here on the first of November, 2009, and promised us that they will come back and have a consultation with us. Because we have people here living on the side of that ravine. And their house, as you hear, Mr. Leo Gal said, the area are bad, they are not secure for people when it's with heavy rain because all the water from Kingsville come down there to go Newtown. So when you come to Kingsville, PM, and your cabinet, we'll have a little walk with you and you will be able to see. Thank you very much.
All right. Let me, let me, let me say to, to my friend who made reference to the par rap and the par rap not being in government and the par rap say he can't help because he doesn't have money. The Dominica Labour Party did a project, as you know, in the gardens. The estimate, the estimate given to us by the Ministry of Public Works for that piece of road was three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And the Labour Party mobilized people from across the country. We sought and we got contributions from the various companies and organizations and individuals. And we built the road. We didn't pay one person one dollar at any time to build the road. People brought food for us. People brought food for us, people brought sandwiches for us, they bring juice, they bring coconut water, coffee, and we all worked together to build the road. As busy as I am, as busy as I am, I find time to go into my village to clean the roads, cut the overhangs, cut the grass, unblock the drains, unblock the culverts. So you're telling me that a PAR rep, even if you're not in government, you can't come and do those things? And, and not only that, not only that, Lennox Linton and the Workers' Party, including Joshua Francis, could raise, could raise over a hundred thousand to, to pay for Lennox Tong. And you're telling me, and you're telling me they can't have a radio phone to raise $1 to help somebody fix a house in Newtown? And, and the youth man there told us, and let me tell you something, when I was the PAR rep in the early days in Vickers constituency, and when we came into office in 2000 and I saw the situation confronting Dominica, what the Workers' Party left, I recognized that the treasury would not be able to help me, my constituency, in the manner I would like them to do. And like this youngster, I used to sit down late at night and early morning and to write projects and to send it to foreign governments and institutions. And I would get money to do roads and houses and to train my people, my constituency. And I was in government, I was in government as a PAR rep and I still wrote projects to send to foreign governments. So I told you darling, and you must understand that these men calling themselves Workers' Party, PAR reps and candidates do not love people. And they did not come into politics, they did not come into politics to serve people. They were looking for jobs. And the moment they didn't get the job that they wanted, they have removed themselves. They have removed themselves from the representation. So it's important, my darling, to you to look at your wellbeing and that of your children and to, and to understand that people must not believe that it can fool you with fine words. You understand? Because I don't expect them to come and build, I don't expect Mr. Francis to build a stadium in, in, in Rosa South. But Bonjour, you can't help a little child to do something, a little parent to do something. You can't come and clean, clean the place and plant flowers. So let us understand, you can't go and get some cement, some, some cement and, and, and get some tarish free of charge. We would give him the tarish and block some holes in Kings Hill, block some holes on the road. I mean, come on. So I don't expect him to do a big project and so forth, but as small as it is, as small as it is, Joshua Francis, a member of Parliament, has, has time for many other things except the representation of his people. We, we take note of the basketball court and we will send some people soon to work if you on the estimates and to see how we can assist in upgrading that half court for, for the youths in, in, in Harlem there in Newtown, okay? So we take note of that. And I will ensure that we meet very soon, maybe by the end of the week. So we'll meet to discuss the five and potentially the six youngsters who have to go overseas. Mrs. Thomas, we take note of all the concerns you raised and the recommendations and the requests that you've made to us in respect to the matters relating to the, the community centre in, in Kings Hill. One of the issues with regards, just briefly, quickly, one of the issues with regards to the BNTF funding community centres, they raise concerns, and I don't agree with them, I told them I don't, I don't agree with them, but they raise concerns about too many community centres in Dominica. And I said to them, look, but you can't tell us our priorities. If you say the financing, we have to decide the priorities. How can you sit and barb at us in the city and tell us we don't need more community centres in Dominica? But it's people's money, I don't, I can't tell them how to spend their money. You understand what I'm saying? But we will look at, at how we can work with the community to, to effect that particular request ourselves and so forth. But it is the, it is the BNTF who decided that we had too many, too many community centres in Dominica. Even to the point where there was one in my constituents in Penville that was affected by, by, by this decision I'm from, and you know me, I don't have time to waste with these people. If, if you have your money, my brother, and you want to decide how you want to spend your money, keep your money. So I don't have no big business to talk to them fellows, so, so that, that is what they, they indicated and so forth. We, the issue of applying for jobs, I think it might be better if we arrange for you to meet with the CPO, the Chief Personnel Officer, who can take you through the process. There is a entry requirement in the public service, you have a certain number of O levels and so forth, okay? And then sometimes all depends on whether it is a vacancy or to match your skill sets or a vacancy at all. Well, I don't know about you, Paul Strick, because Paul Strick, some of us, I don't know. Sometimes, sometimes that, that's training not strong enough, you know, so. But we can arrange, we can arrange for you to meet with the, with the, with the CPO because contrary to what people think, the, the, the government or the cabinet, we don't get involved, value. Contrary to what people think, in, in employment in the public service, except positions where the constitution gives the Prime Minister the authority to object to certain positions and so forth. But if we know of any particular challenge, we do inquire and to find what's going on and to see how the, the public service can respond to the concerns raised by, by the individuals and so forth, okay? The other points, we, we noted them, the road close to the cemetery. I think eventually, I mean, this is a small road, a very narrow road, so it doesn't take much to fix. But in the scheme of things, with everybody saying their road is priority. I mean, you know, Donald, Donald said the centre road is not priority, the back road is priority. So you, you will have these competing, competing views. But just to say to you darling, eventually we'll come to your area. We, we have this area and it's a very important bypass from the, from the, from the, both the Kings Hill Centre Road and of course the Mon Bruce Road and so on. So I, I, I know they would very well, okay? But thank you very much, my dear brothers and sisters.